Call me in rapid communication order, please stand before the place.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approve all the minutes.
Who approve?
Motion in second, all in favor of approving minutes, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposing sign, motion carried, approve the agenda. Please approve.
Say.
Motion in second to approve the agenda, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposing sign, motion carried.
Kevin, who's up?
Alright, I have a mini marathon, so if you interrupt me, do it. Okay, first thing is all those bids that we took for graveling and, hold on one second. Order culverts for a few projects we got coming up and also we got some more stock in our yard. It's gonna cost fifty-one thousand six hundred and eighteen. Um, we had two in Harding Township, the ice ruined that we're just gonna need to replace, they're seventy-four hundred. And then two in Hamer Township that rusted out last fall that we're gonna need to replace. And the ones on Ramsey County ten are those three that the Water Ward did a study for. Three forty-eight inch art now. And the rest are stock.
How many got ruined by ice in Harding? Just a couple?
Get two, there were four at that site, but two, and they weren't next to each other either, I don't know. It's on the, I figure out, they had about a forty-five degree angle sticking out of the water, so. I don't think you could do it if you tried.
Push them right up.
Yeah. I'll see if I can get them to show us.
There must be pretty good, pretty good size culverts now.
Yeah, they're uh.
We have one of those in our town with like that.
Orange not wood?
That's the second time I've been pushed back down and weighted down with stuff and.
I love to figure something, way to secure it.
I'll make a motion.
Um.
Sorry.
I'll second that, um, have you, that, uh, Water Ward, did they talk to you about the four and was it, was it four and three of those box culverts that they were?
Four and eight, um, like a year ago or quite a few months ago.
And did they ever get back to you on the completed study or?
Yep.
And.
There'll be any official culverts.
Okay, that was, that was the findings of the study, alright.
They meet the, they meet the standards of the twenty-five year gap.
Okay.
You know, the codes, the laws, whatever say that you can put bigger ones in at your discretion, but then you got downstream issues.
Downstream concerns, right?
But they do meet the current standards, well.
Is that the ones that were, uh, whether they were low enough?
I do believe, at least the one on eight, that big box culvert, yep, that one. I think the other one might be low enough, but it's so tall, I don't think it's ever been full of water. Maybe once or twice in its life, it's been full of water, the top part sits empty.
That's four.
Yeah.
Yeah, then they wanna, they wanted to bore in another additional one at the top because it, it, once it gets high, it fans out so much. We could've kept it in the channel more, but it moves the water, just not quick enough.
And the report that the state gave us said that even if you were to put a five foot round, the culvert at that site, at the same elevation as the box culvert, you would see minimal effects from, or minimal gain from the extra culvert.
We looked for three at that time too, didn't we, 'cause we talked about the fact that if we did something there, we probably have to do something on the ones on three because those ones, they're not, I mean, they're big enough, I think, but this spring they didn't go under, I think bad spring and it was up.
Around the west.
Right, so, west, because it always whenever it was a bad spring. Not this spring, they didn't, they got right up to the top, they were, the road wasn't close to going though.
It's dropped off, I don't know.
Yeah, I haven't been up for a few days, but I think you see the. Had a bad spring, you can have, you always gotta close that down, but you can't do it right there.
One other question, Kevin. Does this cement culvert evidently will last a lot longer than a steel one?
Does, yeah.
What's the cost?
I don't know, maybe twice.
Twice, so.
But you do get the extra years out of it too, yeah.
Hold up better to ice, things like that, obviously, or?
Uh, the new ones, the, the way they've got them built, the design now, yeah, they, you bolt them together, then the old ones that are in, just kinda slip together and they can see they fall apart, sometimes the lips break on them and then the dirt gets where the lip was. But, but the new ones are much better now. A lot of times you'll see them on asphalt roads where you don't wanna dig up the road or have issues, that's why, and they last longer, so.
There's a motion in the second to approve the culverts, all roll call, please.
Wakefield?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rip?
Aye.
Pyphon?
Aye.
Holson?
Motion carried.
Alright.
I was like.
Yeah.
Who's listening?
Next is all the projects that we had and I think Brent sent out the spreadsheet for that showing all the bids. So I don't know if you wanna handle each one of these separate or just handle gravel projects or do it that way or. I think we'd be happy with all these bidders if we just wanna award a little bit of for each project. I don't see any problem with any of these contractors.
You think you're alright, Kevin?
Yep, for like to say, awarded all the gravel projects in one, one motion.
Yeah, these are, these are all beef, we worked with.
Yeah.
I'll make that motion that we approve the little bids on the gravel projects.
Say.
There's a motion in the second, roll call, please.
Brown?
Aye.
Pyphon?
Aye.
Wakefield?
Aye.
Rip?
Aye.
Holson?
Aye.
Motion carried.
And one thing I went out of clothes, they all came in under what my estimate was, on my, my out of budget, so we're good that way too.
They were all under?
All under.
Are you bid?
Some were way under, some were real close.
Nice.
Okay, now next with the chip seal project, uh, about bittering, they've done, uh, more seal coat. They have done our projects for the last, so, six, eight, ten years, something like that.
They're quite a bit cheaper than, uh, the other two bids.
Yeah.
Will be approved.
Yeah, in a second.
Motion in the second, roll call, please.
Pyphon?
Aye.
Wakefield?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rip?
Aye.
Holson?
Aye, motion carried.
And hot mix overlays, um, in the past, we have awarded all the bids, uh, depending on where, where we need the product. Let's say it's up in Edmore and there's a plant up there or wherever, we get it from the cheapest place, this way we can use whoever prices, whoever quoted us the prices.
Also, you wanna approve all three, all three bids?
Both two bids, yeah. Mayo did bids.
Oh, like the Strata and Tri-State, see, I'm gonna pull it from where I need to pull it, I'll make that motion.
There's a motion in the second to approve hot mixed overlays, where'd you say they're gonna set up at, Kevin?
Well, Mayo is right now, they're down in O'Brown and Tri-State comes out of Cheyenne, all of, that's their only plant, is in Cheyenne.
And then Strata's right here?
Strata's here, but they didn't bid, oh, Strata, yeah, right, Strata.
Strata's here.
Strata's here, Mayo didn't bid, that's why I was thinking Mayo was gonna bid, they didn't. Strata's.
They're down in O'Brown right now, you know?
Yeah, Mayo was O'Brown, right?
Yeah, the Buckmire pit, they're setting up for it, start off this evening.
And I had talked to, uh, Tim Mayo and he said it was gonna give us prices, but I don't know if he missed the deadline or what. So we do have just the Strata and Tri-State.
There's a motion in the second to approve Stata and Tri, and Tri-State paving for the hot mixed overlays, roll call, please.
Rip?
Aye.
Pyphon?
Aye.
Wakefield?
Aye.
Brown?
Rip.
Holson?
Aye, motion carried.
And the last one is our road oil, and the point hills resource was cheap on both our MC eight hundred and three thousand, so I would suggest we award to them.
I'll make a motion.
Second, there's a motion in the second to approve the road oil bids, roll call, please.
Rip?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Wakefield?
Aye.
Pyphon?
Aye.
Holson?
Aye, motion carried.
Okay, so the truck road agreement, we did get that changed, so it's alternate months now, remember we talked about that? So the way this reads now is, uh, we alternate months. And they did, the city did sign this last night, so all we need is a motion to sign it, not a party.
Did they ask why they wanted to do that?
They did, and I explained it to them.
I was waiting for them to ask me last night.
What, what did they have to say to that?
Yeah. Um, well, it's too bad that somebody can't work with them and I have, honestly, I have worked with them and. And I will say one thing, it's different blade in an alley versus blade in a road out in the country, so I get that.
Yeah.
And sometimes it's just hard to get people to switch.
Do they have access to the classes and things like that, like they'll tap and all that?
They don't use a.
Okay, motion carried.
That worked out. Yeah.
Well, I would move to adopt, are you bringing that sign by the city?
Say, there's a motion in the second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposing sign, motion carried.
Okay, two things I added, we, we have a door opener, over the door opener, search whether it's, uh, it won't shut itself off. So, we got a price on the new one. I'll pick the floor, but it was fifteen hundred and eighty-two dollars worth, that PS door here, um. And I guess I haven't chopped around yet, I could go up to the lumberyard and see if it, it's a low, low, uh, low clearance opener, so they're not a standard opener. So that's why the higher price, there's no headroom above the rafters. So, I think I would be feel better about looking at a couple more places for it, but just wanted to bring that up, it's over a thousand dollars for an opener.
How's he turn it off now?
Yeah, hit the button.
It's not in the button?
No, we have it up there, it wouldn't open itself either, so they adjusted the springs and they said, they told us the opener was shot, some electrical thing in there. And also the pulley that runs the belt is starting to split apart and we can't do a new pulley. Eventually the belt will slide inside the pulley.
Eventually it won't hold the handle.
Yeah.
Have they looked at putting, is there enough room along the shaft side where you can do one of those side milks installs?
I'll look into that.
I just, we had to put one on it last year and we have a little overhead in our shop, so.
I'll see what the cost, are they expensive?
I think it was about eight hundred bucks, but we just bought a second one and we bought, I think we got it cheaper on sale before we got it out, but yeah, bought it.
But I'll keep you up to speed on that, I didn't realize what it was costing. Um, railroad crossing in, uh, Grand Harbor Township, uh, one that we've been visiting about, it's getting a new. Okay, I got an email from Jim Styren, who is our state helper down there for, in Bismarck for railroad. And he says, just to let you know, the county will not be required to fund a ten percent of the local match for the new signal system being planned at the above location, which is the one we were talking about. It says, BNSF Railway, pick up the tab for the county share, thanks.
Yeah.
Something to me.
Yes.
Whoa, 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 whoa.
So the railway is gonna pick up the ten percent share there.
Have, have you talked with the township on it, they're been in?
Not, I guess not, this like.
They didn't have to make a concession on closing the other road or something like that, like the ten percent?
They might have done.
Uh, you know, he awarded that contract to Camp Halls for the crossing, you know?
Oh, really?
Yeah, and so he had to do some online safety classes for the railroad in, you know, to work, you know, up there on the, on the crossing of the Grand Harbor and then he was supposed to be filing some, some fill for that road, um.
He's probably got it done.
Does he?
The, the second road or the crossing?
That's seventy-six.
The road that they wanna get.
That's a road by the town site.
Really?
Yeah.
The crossing.
Crossing.
Town site, yeah, Adam already done to the north side, maybe can't get to the north side now.
Wow, never thought of that, might not.
Well.
Built a road in there.
It was all in dirt, uh, and all was in February, it was all in dirt.
So, I would pass that on to the, the other parties.
Did they put a completion date or start date?
We, we will have to sign the contract too, I haven't seen that either.
Did you even tell the city this, that, that we got ours for nothing and now we gotta pay all that?
Is that, that's on seventy-fifth avenue, right?
Um, Main Street, they call it.
Yep.
Yep, Seventy-fifth Avenue northeast.
Boy, they're gonna be upset, hey, but you're gonna put it in.
Oh, well, actually, how much is the county saving on that, what was the cost share?
We had twenty, twenty thousand dollars.
One ninety ten, right?
What's that?
It was.
You wanna know what the cost share was?
Ninety-ten, it was like also two hundred thousand dollars.
Yes, it's about twenty thousand dollars.
Twenty thousand, okay, that's good.
Let's get this down though.
Well, it's not very often that, that a company will take on a cost on, to go to their own art, so I'm kinda curious to see if there will be some kind of, uh, fine trick on that, so, yeah.
Concession, not in mind.
What do we have now?
Better maybe they just wanna make sure it's not an accident, they recognize it's a bad location here.
Okay, and we finally got up to last summer maintenance contract in from freshwater for blading, so need a motion to sign that, so.
Second.
There's a motion in the second.
One question on that summer blade, we talked last meeting about the Webster Township and you said we have a thousand dollars left for the season then, for the whole, all the roads in the township?
In that township, yeah.
For three more later.
Uh, there you go.
On the roads they specified, yeah.
The ones they want laid.
The ones they want waited.
Well, yeah, they, they put, they put nine on some roads and you got some with six.
Oh, they did?
I, well, yeah, I think so.
Really good.
There's the higher traffic roads, they went to nine blading as well.
Kind of, no way you're not gonna do that, you know?
Because you go to, so it'd be another two hundred and fifty bucks per mile for six, so it'd be one twenty-five for three on an additional blade. You probably must've put it on then eight miles then, for a couple bucks.
You think all these townships understand that?
Yeah.
I didn't.
It is reasonable.
Would that someone say, take the nine, huh?
Um, your road, yep.
Yeah, there's some roads where they, like, normally we have somewhere we take nine too, just the higher traffic ones. It just, you know, we, you know where you're gonna get the truck traffic at and, so you just take nine blading on those and keep six on the ones that aren't gonna get as much.
There's that shit, right, too, uh, we got the Poplar Grove this year and they're doing a twelve times.
Twelve, and you just want a two thousand bucks then?
Well.
Well, it'd be, it'd be like a two hundred and fifty a mile, 'cause you're just paying for twice the blades.
Yeah, it depends on how many miles, of course.
'Cause we're, we're charging what, two fifty a mile?
Yep.
So it'd be five hundred bucks a mile and then to go to twelve blade, yeah, I guess it'd depend on how many miles you wanna blade that way. Yeah, 'cause you know, not every mile in the township needs to be bladed that much.
Exactly.
But, but you know, we all know where, you know, where the traffic comes.
And Webster, for instance, got some roads they're gonna do three times, 'cause they go to the farm field or whatever, you know?
But it's just more of a low maintenance, just to kinda keep gravel on.
Yeah, keep the grass down. Kind of up to that, leave it up to that.
Yeah, okay, there's a motion in the second to approve, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposing sign, motion carried.
Oh, and then the engineering contract for, uh, next, not this summer, but next summer, we plan to overlay Ramsey County one and the military road and while I drive. So, the design engineering, yeah, we budgeted for that this year and this is the contract from KJ for that, the design work. Uh, we had amounts to thirty-five thousand nine hundred and thirty-six dollars and thirty cents. And then making my end was for forty thousand, so.
And that was for Ramsey one military road and while I drive?
Correct. Yeah, we talked about that in the past too, that if, if for some reason we decide not to overlay or something, we can keep it on the shelf and do the engineering later again. I'll make the motion to approve signing the contract.
Second, there's a motion in the second, roll call, please.
Rip?
Aye.
Wakefield?
Aye.
Pyphon?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Holson?
Aye, motion carried.
That's all I have?
Questions for Kevin?
You got through the math, huh?
Thank you, Kevin.
Thanks.
And then the new business, approved letter of transfer. What do you want finished first?
Oh, I should. I got so many notes around here, I can't see it.
Oh, that happened.
Unfinished, uh, notice of annual, um, the dirt.
I hear that for you, man.
Yep.
Yeah, but deadline is.
If anybody, if anybody wanted to go or could.
Yeah, what was the date that you bought?
May eighth.
Put your address where?
Thought you twisted it up, huh?
Where do I do that?
May tenth.
The meeting was May tenth, you said?
Or we could just send in a proxy and.
For bid results?
I think you look at the.
Yeah.
First thing. There's less than.
And that's why I'm a hard. That's completely.
Don't you ask me?
I know about the culture, I'll probably get away with it.
Culture, it's the first thing I know.
So what I wish you on that. What, what are we doing, what's the bid for?
I, I.
What did they approve also?
Most of it's in stock, but I, when I sell, people, people, but there was two.
Set of a million.
And then we had a project that got done last year.
I'll make a motion, we are pointing to, uh, Lucas to go to the end of the meeting as our sign representative.
There's a motion in the second to send Lucas to the end of the meeting, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposing sign, motion carried. Letter from DOT Special Road Fund.
Do you know with that, uh, road, we have to, Sons of Jacob Cemetery qualify for this?
I think so.
And so, it had to be a county road, do you have the stipulations or?
Recreational or, I think.
Oh, I thought it said historical or. Yeah, something like that, do you remember?
SRF fund?
Well, it's just a.
Cult creation, did we get one?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We, we read it last, last time we bought, but it.
Says, SRF projects are limited to roads that provide access to end or are within recreation, tourist and historical areas. Oh, I mean, how good is the road?
Well, Mike said they, uh, dumped six hundred dollars worth of gravel on there, but he said it certainly could use some, and help again, so I don't think it'd be a whole lot.
Alright, so they're right here, and if you have many agencies within your jurisdiction, such as park wards, historical societies, townships, et cetera, please advise them of this program. Depending upon the proposed site and location, the application must be sponsored by a county, city, or state agency, so we can tell whoever's in charge of it and see if we can put an application together and sponsor them.
Orders at Sons of Jacob Committee, um, you know, I don't know what kind of affiliation or, um, if they're on the docket or whatever, that tend to be all but.
How many files is it, John?
I don't know, maybe one, two, must be all three, three and a half. Yeah, I'll hold that.
Would be some gravel spots that they need to gravel or?
I, I think so.
Well, I mean, if, if the program exists and it's not too, too hard to think to submit an application for the funding, why not do it?
That's the thing I was just kinda thinking, but is there anything else that we could qualify as a historical location that we could, you know, any kind of a cemetery we have up there that would be of interest to people or something like that? I'm sure it probably has to be an established historic site or something like that, but.
Yeah, but, well, I, I think, you know, the, with the process going through with that Sons of Jacob being recognized by the state historical society, you know, and I think there are applications into Washington for being on the national register, so. It, hopefully you'd think that it would be, you know, um, it would, it would qualify as a historical.
I, I would bet that it would.
Well, it should, that, and if, if it's on the registers and everything, you might get a little more traffic, so it probably wouldn't be bad to get a little bit more gravel.
Does it say on there like the match is eighty, twenty, or?
This doesn't say.
I think that's what it is, but.
But am I, am I wrong in, in reading it to say that, uh, whatever the organization is that wants that funding, they put in the application and we would just sign on as a sponsor at the time that they were submitting?
Yeah, and I think the match would have to be whoever's sponsoring or whoever wants the project, so, you know? If it was five thousand dollars worth of gravel work or whatever, they have to probably watch upon their sponsors.
It was that, that township?
Yeah.
As a sponsor.
Society or whoever.
As a sponsor, all the paperwork goes through us, all the money goes through us, so it's.
They have to have a sponsoring governing agency that would basically handle all the.
Yep.
This is the program, we're looking at the campaign fishing dock.
Yeah, I think they're gonna put in a, good, I put an estimate together for Mike and he's gonna put the grant in, will probably be able to be the sponsors, but he's good at work.
Let's go with this program.
Yep, good.
Like, uh, cemetery up there, maybe we could, uh, look at it with the county, doing some hauling on some of those spots or gravel up in that area or?
Um, we could, we're doing, uh, down in Woodrow, I don't know, if I have that, that's probably our closest project.
What township is that?
Hamer, partly Hamer, I hope it's all Hamer.
I was gonna say, maybe, maybe the, the road to do it would be talked to, if, if Jeff would be willing to talk to Mike about it and see who's on their board and then maybe we could get, have them get in contact with the township. 'Cause maybe the township's gonna be doing some spot gravel in or something this summer and if they are, maybe it would be a good time to put in an application, they could do it at the same time, they could keep the costs down and.
There's no chances of the bus route, yeah.
Never mind.
Who lives on this road?
I don't even know.
I'm, I was under the understanding that it just went to the cemetery and basically that announcement, isn't that right?
Uh, Mike lives there. No, it, it would go.
The cemetery is west of that township road, correct? It's been a long time since I've been there as well, it's been, it's been years.
I couldn't find it.
So you're thinking of it coming off Ohio seventeen?
Yeah, how many miles is it off of seventeen?
Oh, not that far.
So there's a road straight into the cemetery off of seven, off of the township road that comes off of seventeen, 'cause it's the east west road that runs into the cemetery.
From, from twenty, it's, it's six miles on Denny seventeen.
Six miles, six miles over on seventeen, then you gotta go south and west, it's tucked in south.
Yeah, and then, so the eighty-eighth Avenue Northeast, which is the last road that goes to it, is one point seven miles, according to the website on how to get there.
Say, take a, take an aerial view on the personal area, you'll be able to. I mean, it, it, it doesn't really matter how long it is to the extent of, just so we can kinda tell them if they're interested in it, I guess.
But it looks like, I mean, it's about two miles of gravel that goes to that.
You'll have to put some kinda cost estimate in this application?
Yeah, I'm sure they do, yeah.
And I can help with that, whoever.
Sure, don't hurt to put both programs in for, it's like.
Oh, here, but not even want, they want all the.
Like you said, the worst thing that could happen is you.
Take, take the cheapest one.
It'll give you any money, I mean, if that's the case, that's the case, I mean.
Yeah, it all depends on who owns the plant, you know? If that's the only two applications, well.
Well, they had that front last year too for, it's not special, but something else where like Brock had tried to get their sidewalks, but, you know, and that didn't happen, but, you know, it never hurts them. All you're up is your time, basically.
Right.
For computer, you know?
It's not losing, is it?
Little computer, a little more.
Little more video.
Little more video.
They might be, they might be doing something on the server.
I almost wonder if they're not, 'cause I can't pull it up either, I'm trying to pull it up on my tablet, I can't get it up.
He's, he's here, so.
The, uh, wire stuff, we need to.
Yeah. Max.
How many miles would it be, so?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Who, who was, Jeremy or?
I don't know, it's Shirley LaFleur or?
I think it's Shirley, I think Shirley is, and then Mike handles it.
And, you know, Shirley did the, all the late work on that application for the historical. You know, Shirley did the, all the late work on that application for the Historical Society.
Yeah.
Um, without being approved through the, or put a Historical Society in the national register.
Oh yeah, she's, she's put a lot of effort into that.
Yeah.
Lot of effort.
Well, I can help with the part of the legwork anyway.
Okay, well then, uh, Jeff, would you feel comfortable talking to Mike and then you can work with Kevin directly?
When's that have to begin?
June fifteenth.
June fifteenth. Perfect.
Well, then I guess we'll table it until it comes back up again.
Yeah. We'll...
You the second to table it? Legally?
Uh, yeah.
She made it. Is that called as a motion? I'll say it.
There's a motion and a second to table the Special Road Fund discussion. All in favor, signal if I was saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign, being the motion carried. Letter of transfer, you all have that in front of you.
Who's it for?
Say.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, signal if I was saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign, being the motion carried. Approved billing rate or wages in the F E.
Just support them, have them register. We pay twice a year.
This is a county base?
Yeah.
That's our fifty percent share for the six months then?
Yep.
Will to approve.
Second, there's a motion and a second. Rule of call please.
Lefon?
Aye.
Wakefield?
Aye.
Brett?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye. Motion carried. Approved room rate a hundred and ten dollars for treasure auditor convention. Who to approve?
Second.
There's a motion and a second.
Sounds like a nice place to, in Watford City.
My, my understanding from what we've been told is where we're staying, everything is in walking distance. So we don't have to...
You have to have that sort of...
No, I just hope it don't rain, I might melt.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, signal if I was saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign, being the motion carried. Approved date for surplus sale, June twenty.
Hold to approve.
There's a motion and...
Second.
And a second. All in favor of the...
Is this a commission date?
It's a duty, isn't it?
Yeah.
Second, second, be...
Right after the commission date? Are we gonna step around that?
I've talked to the auditor, the state auditors about that, and he's gonna get back to me for her.
I'd debate it and stand it, we should drag ourselves away from doing that.
Okay.
I think Roger could do it. I think Candy would help him or...
They're, they're gonna look at it.
But you give the authority to approving bids. What are you looking at? I don't know.
I guess at the end of the day, we're still gonna have to approve the bids, but if they wanna do it...
Like, he, he mentioned just briefly in, in visiting with him, like, if there were any vehicles, the vehicles would have to come before the board in, you know?
Just to approve.
But not, but not all the, you know...
Every county is different too, how they do it.
The chairs, the, yeah.
You know, cause we do a surplus auction, but like, for instance, I saw Ward County had some highway department stuff on just a regular auction. So apparently, either they make a motion ahead of time to accept the bids or just accept them afterwards and say whatever. But I mean, obviously, if they have on a regular auction, people are gonna take their stuff that day. So, you know?
And then the feedback that I've gotten from, you know, sending to different auditors, some hire an auctioneer and they actually have, you know, and they take their cut of commission.
We got a lot to invite all their stuff.
Yeah, you know?
I would be okay with it.
Could be like selling boxes of stuff at the house, cause they have just three hours with the small stuff?
Um, some of, some of the other feedback was like the computer equipment they have, um, with the company where it's just buyback and then they get a credit towards the purchase of something and...
Yeah.
It's, you know, they're not worth much when, you know?
I, I think it's just a waste of commission, I, that's what I think.
Yep.
It would be longer. Yeah.
I mean, it's, you know, depends on how much we're selling every year. Sometimes it's not too bad, sometimes it's, you know, two pages, you know? Yeah.
You know, wait all the...
And we wanna change it so that we do it every other year. So that it's not during election time, it's not during...
Yeah, then, then you wanna make them need it really long. Like you say.
Mm-hmm, you know? I mean, depending on their findings and what, and what they, you know, what they tell me, I mean, if all we have to do is the vehicles, then...
Yeah, it will take long.
I mean,
So, the reason that we have it during the commission meeting is that to allow people to, um, up their bid? Um...
The reason, so you can approve all the sales.
Yeah. Yeah, technically, we've always run it, we approve the bids and the sales following immediately, so that way they can pay for them and come pick up their stuff.
Yeah. But see, like, Cass County does it where if something is a value a thousand dollars and higher, it has to go before the board. Anything under that, no.
Not objecting to it.
Maybe we should do something that, that, maybe we should just develop a policy, write it up and say, hey, this is how we're gonna handle it from now on.
Yeah.
Yeah. We may, maybe we need to postpone the, or table the date to come up with the policy, you think, or?
Well, when, when, when was the state auditor going to get back to you by any idea?
Well, they're here tomorrow, we got to use them.
Oh, so they might have an idea for you tomorrow. We could, we could deal with it in our first meeting we made then.
Yeah.
Still plenty of time to set a table. Did anybody make a motion already?
I will.
I have a motion too, but I'll retract the...
Retract.
We'll retract the motion. Come up with a...
Yeah, that makes sense.
It's over a hundred dollars, maybe we should have a...
Well, even, for most of the, you can even do, you can even lower it a little, cause it was a lot of stuff, like you said, two and five and ten, twenty dollar stuff. I mean, really, I think last year there was probably ten items, maybe they were five hundred dollars or more, maybe if even...
I think the last one they added in the meeting lasted, what, three hours?
Less than one.
That wasn't a problem. I mean, there was, there was other things we had to do that day.
It was a lot. I mean, when you have one dollar, three dollar...
But that, the auction wasn't a problem, that didn't, it added to the problem.
No, but...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're gonna table that.
Okay, so we have, you made the motion?
No, I think, yeah, yeah, yeah.
You had a motion for a second.
Okay. Okay.
All in favor, signal if I was saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign.
Maybe we want Cass County's policy, copy of that, we can get that on.
Yeah, there, he sent me a bunch of stuff today.
I can hop my line with you, cause I got all their stuff right on my...
Yeah.
Bring something like that, Candy.
Okay.
Candy, you know what?
Six month review for auditor. Candy, six months. I've talked to different board. She gets a little raised. Pardon me? She gets a little raised in her probation period. Review is done. And, and wishes.
And that was kind of all in, set in place...
Yep.
Before, when, when she came on board.
Yep.
Yeah, the, the, the raised portion off of probationary periods in our, in our policy book, in our employee handbook. So it's just a matter of, have you been performing satisfactorily to this point essentially?
I'll make a motion.
Yeah.
There's a motion and a second to approve Candy's six month review. Is there a second?
All second.
Yeah.
A motion and a second. Let's have a rule call on this, just...
Wakefield?
Aye.
Brett?
Aye.
Lefon?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye. Motion carried. Visitors and delegations? None. Announcements.
Could, can I bring one thing up?
Sure.
We've talked about in the past, we gotta do something with HR. And obviously, our business is gonna be really tough this summer. But I think it's something we have to do something with for a couple of different reasons. We, and I'm, I'm not begging the city down in this, but I'm just saying, we've seen what can happen when you don't do yearly performance reviews and do them on time and do them correctly, all of a sudden, you can get yourself into trouble. And I think, you know, we need to come up with some kind of a policy where we're gonna do yearly performance reviews and then have HR sit in on them and, you know, all those things, we make sure we, you know, cross our teeth without our eyes. So if something were to happen, you know, we give ourselves cover essentially. And that, and it's good for the employees to do constructive criticism, it'll be better at your job to be positive. You know, sometimes it's tough, but...
Well, I think there's other, other things that HR can bring to the table too.
Yeah, well, I mean, you sat through a performance review on the, on the extension agency, like you said, it was really positive.
Yeah. Yeah, you know, and I think, uh, other educational things that they bring to the table, policy updates, uh, different things like that, that, that we overlook, that, that get overlooked, and pretty soon, they're ten years out of date and, you know, going wild would be times, uh, kinda thing. So yeah, I think it's a good idea to take a, take a peek at it.
Well, I, I just break, I just think about it now, bring it up now, because, you know, I know from my mind, it's April, May's coming quick. Then, so we're gonna be planting all of May, June, and all of a sudden, budgeting is right around the corner. And we're gonna have to make a decision on if we're gonna do something at the first year before we budget, obviously. At least have some ideas on what cost it's gonna entail and what our options are gonna be. So I think it would be prudent of us to get some kind of a plan together now, if it's something we think is worthwhile.
Uh, it's a good thing to take a look at.
And I really appreciate you taking the lead on bringing up Adam, because it's something that, that has been concerning to me also. And I think that having somebody who has that delegated responsibility day to day can ensure that little issues don't become big issues. Um, because although we all hold portfolios here, this isn't necessarily where we spend all of our time, so there are things that can put through the cracks. And I think we've seen how that can happen too. Um, and so I think that whether that be a, a part-time person that we can look up to bring on or, or a full-time position, I don't know. Um, but I think that it's really important that we have somebody to delegate that responsibility to, so that if and when the time comes that there's a small issue, first of all, that it can be handled, uh, in a, in a prudent and perhaps private manner, if that's appropriate. Um, you know, because although the buck stops with us, some, some, some things don't necessarily need to come all the way to this commission to be resolved. And so if we can have that happen, I think that really it can improve the overall communication workflow in the courthouse.
That, and, you know, we talked about it when, when you came on as auditor too, that, you know, part of it is how comfortable are you having to essentially take the role of an HR person when you have no training in being an HR person? You know, and that's traditionally fallen on the auditor's office to take care of that situation, but that also lends itself to the possibility of opening up problems too, you know? If, if you're trying to handle it and doing the best you can, but you don't have any formal education in it, you know? Plus employment law, as we, when, when Lonnie was sitting in the chair over there, uh, you know, he said is extremely, extremely convoluted and difficult. And he wasn't even comfortable giving us an opinion on employment law a couple of times, cause it can be complicated. It's never hurts to have somebody that's pretty well vested in that, that can give you some updates for all the things that need to be done, so...
So how do you wanna handle it? You wanna, you know, come up with a budget first, you wanna?
I, I don't know, I, I guess, can't hear that, I've talked about it a little bit, if it's, if it's a thing where, how do you, you know, the Association of Counties obviously has some kind of a program. I guess it, it comes down to how often do we think we need somebody here or not here? You know, you know, we've got, use the Association of Counties for employee handbook updates, and they've done, I guess, in my opinion, a good job.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, it's, it's been quick, it's, they've showed us what needs to be done, it's updated nicely.
Helped us with the state's attorney.
Helped us with the state's attorney hire. I, I, the only thing I would say is, if, if we did something where maybe we did hire somebody on part-time or something, if that was a possibility, you could keep the costs in-house every time you had to do a search, you wouldn't have to pay an out-of-house cost. Plus, it would be nice, at least in my opinion, to have somebody here. You know, doesn't have to be every day, but three days a week, two days a week, whatever.
Can't be afford that.
Yeah, that's the problem, and it's all comes down to cost.
I think the budget this year is gonna be a tough one, I don't...
I know.
I don't laugh.
Yeah, I don't, I agree.
I definitely have myself ready for that.
No, I, I do too, and then that's what I'm saying, it's tough to bring up expanding staff in a time like this, but, you know, I, I guess, I look at it from the aspect, if, if we do something and we do, do it right, and we make a mistake in employment law, it's gonna cost us a whole heck of a lot more on the backside than the front side. You know, the old, the old adage, ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure.
The thing you gotta remember with a HR person is you, the bottom always has to stop at the commission.
I agree, I agree.
You know, the commission got that, I would say.
Yeah. Of course it is.
And in the past, that wasn't the case, or need be.
Well, you know, I, I think we have a budget of fourteen thousand for the, this year. Um, you know, if we could, if we could look around and see what we can find for, for that kind of dollar amount, and stay within that, I think, uh, we, you know, I, I think it would be a prudent way to spend our money. You know, we're, we're not looking at a full-time employee for seventy grand plus benefits.
Yeah. Oh, no, I agree, yeah.
You, you know, but I, I think that would be, uh, something on a very part-time basis that would be able to update our policy to make sure that we're staying within all the employment laws and be on hand if, if needed for the council or, uh, you know, whether we're hiring somebody new or or possibility of letting somebody go, kind of thing, or helping us with the performance reviews.
Well, you know...
Just a slip, here's your minute. I don't know, here's, here's, I brought it up to my desk today.
Yeah.
Here's the amendment to twenty-two oh six.
I haven't looked at it yet, it's, uh...
Clear and block.
The, the, uh...
But I, what, my point is there is, I talked to Dennis today, and it's all pretty favorable for the way it's written for Van's account. With the grant money's gonna stay there. And decide to take over the state. So... But, uh, go back to the HR. What does the Association of Counties say? Can they fit us in on a need basis?
I'm su, I'm sure they could, you know? I, I mean, I can send an email, you know, or call Chuck tomorrow, you know? Visit with him, ask him what's, you know, what we're looking for, what we're, you know?
I mean, I, I guess I look at it, you know, it depends on what their charging scale is. But it, would it make more sense to say, we wanna essentially hire you on a retainer basis? And so you'll give us so many hours for the year or whatever, and we'll pay in the fourteen, fifteen thousand bucks. And then we'll use it as need be, because, you know, like you've said in the past, Kevin, it, it's good to have somebody to step in and when you have a question, you know?
You know, whenever I email him, I mean, even, even if it's...
And Chuck's good about it. And Chuck's good about it.
Just a random question, I mean, I get an email back, or he'll, he'll call, he'll pick up the phone and call them.
I mean, it, 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 well, well, quick.
Where, where it'd really be handy is like, um. Uh, say an employee has an issue with whatever, they need somebody to talk to.
Right, and, and I think that that is, at least for me, that's one of the big things. The other thing that, that concerned me when we had this issue come before this commission is, is we need somebody that we can work with to write up. Uh, how, when we have something that goes wrong, how we handle that. Because when we came across this in the past, I voiced then that I was afraid that if we made a judgment, we were gonna be fairly arbitrary in that judgment, and then lock us into that judgment going forward. And I think having somebody that we can work with who, who, you know, has a backing in, in HR. That'd be very helpful in ensuring that, that the, whatever reprimand is necessary fits the reason that we're doing it, you know?
Yeah. And, and, you know, part of the problem is, we're kind of right on that cusp of how many employees you have to have somebody full-time or not. You know, we're kind of big, but we're not too big, you know, I think they always say the number's somewhere between eighty and a hundred employees is where you really start thinking about have a full-time in-house HR person, where at what, seventy-something? So we're kinda, I mean, I like the idea of talking to the Association of Counties and starting there and seeing how they, what they could do for us, and then kind of using our way into it.
Right.
Maybe use them for a year and see how that works, and then maybe if we think we need more services or something like that, but. At least get a cost estimate, see what they'll do for us, or if they can even fit a same, cause I know that service has been used quite a bit. I mean, I think they're pretty doggone busy. So, but maybe he would have some advice to somebody else we could, we could, uh, talk to, too, but Chuck's always really good to work with, so. That, I think, that'd be, that'd be the place to start. And, and see what we can get, and if we maybe have to bump the budget from fourteen to twenty or something, we could do a little bit of wiggle room. I, I agree though, that bringing somebody on full-time is gonna be impossible, I think that's out of the question, but.
That's, uh.
Ah, that's a.
If you could tack, maybe tack somebody part-time or something in Devil's Lake, that you could use a couple of days a week or something, you know.
Well, I'd say I really got at the Law and Fortune Center with the IT person, there's. He's familiar with HR, he can pick up a couple of courses, but.
Yeah.
I'm not very familiar with him, so.
Yeah, and, and HR's, it's a pretty broad thing, so you wanna make sure you got somebody that's up to date on education and has knowledge of how to do things and handle situations, cause it's.
Yeah.
You know, HR is always a, they step in a some tough situations sometimes.
Sure, and I think, and you know, it's, it's tough for, for a candy, I think, because how can you expect a person to come into every situation in a, in a working relationship and be wearing a different hat? Every time, you know, this time I'm coming to you as the HR person, this time I'm coming to you as the auditor, that's not fair to you, and that's not fair to anybody else who may have a concern. You know, because, and, and that's not speaking anything to that, it's just, it's just, it's hard. It's hard if you don't have a designated person that you know, when you go in, what kind of a relationship, what kind of an encounter you can expect to have with them. So.
And you wanna need a HR person to represent its county, and nobody, another, no other public identity in this area.
Yeah, I agree, I agree, we need somebody that'll just, you know.
Cause you can't have the Law and Fortune Center do it, well, that's a, definitely.
Yeah, you start mixing stuff, and then it gets really difficult and get conflicts and, yeah. So, the Association of Counties is obviously our first, I would say our first stop is going to talk to Chuck and see what they can do for us, and then we'll kind of go from there. I, I thought about it, we better bring it up now, because, you know, budgeting's right around the corner, so.
Well, in addition to that, seeing as we've brought it up, I think that irrespective of what we decide to do with an HR person, we need, do need to have that discussion about. How, uh, we choose to, to do reprimands in cases of violations, and make sure that we have that policy proactively rather than reactively.
I agree. You know, and, and part of it comes down to. You know, internal reviews and yearly reviews from, you know, Kevin to his staff and portfolio holders to Kevin, and all those things, and making sure it's documented and it's in a file and it's there, and. It's honest and, and everything else, so that when, when and if, hopefully never a problem comes up, but we've, in just the two and a half years I've been here, we've run into a lot of problems, so. You wanna make sure that you got all your bases covered.
One thing, all the HR conferences that I've been to lately, they tell you that, uh. If you're not doing your evaluations properly, they can get you in trouble the other way too, if you're constantly giving a person good reviews, and. Maybe there's an issue going on that you're not talking about that, well, they bring that up against you later on, so if you're not doing it.
I mean, it's actually in the paper today, it's in today's paper.
So, so they're saying you're better off not doing it, I don't know, all the latest mentions, but whatever your policy says, that's what you should be doing.
Yeah, well, I'm just, yeah, I mean, and that's where you'd have to have somebody that knows what they're talking about, to make sure you set up your policy correctly and make sure you're doing things correctly, and. You know, I think we fall into it too here, you know, we're kind of North Dakota nice, you know, to a point, it's really tough to, you know, get on somebody and, and. Say, I'm doing it in a positive fashion, but, you know, I think it's tough sometimes, you know, cause we're all friendly people. But at the same time, I, I really think it's, it's a development issue, if you give your staff constructive criticism. They should get better, hopefully, at their job, even if they're already really good at it. If you can strive from good to great and, you know, move to excellent, I mean, that's what you're shooting for. At all times, so. And that's just a one vehicle hit then, along with training and development and all the other things we ought to do, or should do. I'm done.
Okay.
Are there any?
Can we take an actionable away from this, or how do we wanna proceed?
I, I would, I would say, we made it up, we made it a motion, I would just say, let's put it on the agenda for next meeting, and have, uh, Candy. Contact Chuck and kind of tell her what our parameters are for dollars right now, and, and see if there's a retainer fee or whatever, and come up with some ideas. And we can just kind of work it out the next few years.
That's fair.
Okay, everybody's okay with that?
I think so.
Okay, are there any announcements?
Uh, I have a question. I've got a couple of citizens asked me about. Who's responsible for cleaning up dumped trash on township roads?
The township?
Yeah. So, somebody comes out and they load, load trash and they just decide to dump it in the ditch.
Oh, okay, the five bucks for the landfill or whatever.
It's in, in the right of way, it's the township's problem, I suppose.
Um.
If it's an obstruction, let's say a sign or a rock or something, that somebody had to be put there, that's different, you can make them remove it, if you don't know who did it.
That, that's, that's the big deal, is knowing who did it. Um, and one of the things was brought up and, or asked, you know, does the county have an agreement with the city to use the landfill, or have county residents? Have the ability to use landfills, so there isn't that. Well, I, I have this to get rid of, but I'm not gonna pay a fee to get rid of it, kind of thing. And have it open to the, the dump for Ramsey County, kind of thing. And have we ever done that in the past, you know, or?
We have picked up the bags of garbage and just taken them to the dump, they don't charge us, but we don't actually pick it up ourselves.
That'd be one thing to talk, I mean, we do pay, we, we dump money into the recycling program. You know, ten thousand dollars, five or ten, I can't remember, five, but I mean.
But, but nothing ordered to the inner landfill?
No.
Okay.
Settle for recall.
Well, I don't know how big of a problem it is, I know there, somebody came along our township road. And dumped a tub and some other stuff, looked like they were remodeling a trailer house. And it was right after all those storms, and so, um, Midwest sanitation or whatever, that. They had missed us for about four weeks, and they actually stopped and picked this stuff up. Um, sheriff deputy came on, took some pictures of it, cause our neighbor had called, uh, the sheriff, and. And, you know, I don't know if there's anything that ever could have been followed up with. You know, who, who had done it, but, uh, it was, but yeah, Midwest sanitation stopped and, and picked it up, cause all of a sudden it was gone. And, uh, it was the day that the trash man showed up. Cause we had piles and piles of, of stuff, cause they had missed us, you know, it just so happened, it stormed like, uh, every, every day that our garbage day was, and so it kept on getting delayed and delayed, and. So when they did come out there, it happened to be a, happening some recycle or some remodeling and stuff in, uh, in the ditch, so. It was nice of them to stop and pick it up, but, you know, I don't know who, who picks it up, or, you know, if we have a cleanup day, or if that's something that should be organized through the townships to. You know, and I don't know how big of a problem it is, you know, it's, uh, you know, very little problem out in, in our area that I've noticed anyway, that was the first time that I've seen. Stuff, but I've noticed on, on going out to the gun range, you know, they're, you know, it's out of the landfill, and. And I suppose people come out there to dump trash and it's closed or something for whatever reason, and they decided they're not taking their trash back, home with them, so.
Yeah, they don't, right.
Yeah. You know, but I don't know, it's just something that I, I've got a couple different people bringing up, and I said, well, I'll ask them, and see if anybody's had that issue in their townships, or. If we've had that brought up at the county, or.
Okay, so, like say the four H girls pick up, rent the gun or something, then we'll pick up the bags and.
Okay.
Cities do a lot like us.
Yeah. I know that the football boosters just did a, a cleanup from, on the Woodland, or. They cleaned up from Highway nineteen into Woodland.
Somebody pay them to do that?
Well, Kyle had, he usually gives a, a contribution to the football boosters. And the coach makes the kids go out there and show up, you know? And also, it's a win-win, you know, cause the boosters give the kids a lot of stuff, uh. They show up as freshmen, they get a bag, and I think, uh, they all got new helmets, and they get meals on out of town trips, and so. It's kind of a win-win, but it's. Uh, it's, it, it's a big, uh, have the kids volunteering new stuff.
Yeah, it's good for the kids, you know?
Is that, is that something that maybe we should? Contact the city and. I've had, I've had the same thing, you know, I go out to Six Mile Bay, that, that one road that goes into the lake, yeah, there's garbage. You know, and, and I pick up stuff here and there, just, just to pick it up, but, you know. There's a lot of stuff out there, I just wonder, you know, maybe you have the right idea, get a, a county cleanup day, or maybe even a couple during, during the year, and maybe. It'll keep some of that garbage out of the ditches.
Hey, you know, we tried to add something, you know, I, I did talk to the mayor about, you know, if there's something, and he said he'd check with the sanitation guy to see if. He, he said, he thought at, at some point in the past, the county used to have something that, you know, he couldn't remember, so he was gonna check and, and see, and. And then maybe talk to see what kind of places will be available for us, or something like that, so. I put the wheels in motion to, to just to, to see, and, you know, I thought we'd at least check into it. You know, if we can keep our area or county clean, and, you know, and don't have to put it out on a. Uh, such an isolated term, I see, it just kind of makes my blood boil a little.
Branches and leaves and trash, or clippings?
Uh, take, take to the, take to the recycle center, and, you know, if, if county residents know about that, and, you know, if that's a, a good thing to bring out.
Aren't, aren't we entitled to use all the facilities there, the cans, the aluminum, the cardboard?
Yep.
Yep.
So.
But that doesn't save, you know, a refrigerator from getting tossed, you know? And right now, I know where there's a refrigerator sitting, you know, so.
You know, um. So.
That might be sent to the paper, cause a little blurb in that, you know, the Ramsey County residents are allowed to use that.
Allowed to use the inner landfill?
Yeah, no, the recycle center.
Recycle center, okay, oh, so can, even though.
Cause we pay for that, I, maybe a lot of people don't understand that we're allowed to use that.
Yeah, even though it's in the city, they're allowed to use it, county residents, I will.
The cards, the plastic, the grass and like branch clippings or whatever.
Almost all the countries can deal with the grass and branches, or the cardboard and the other stuff.
Yeah, that's nice of you, I was about to bring it to you.
Yep.
Interesting, which can I, I'm bringing my aluminum cans.
That, that's, that's. I'm amazed somebody doesn't steal all those aluminum cans by that thing, we'll do the hair trunks.
I have aluminum cans. So. Oh, it's okay, Eric, I mentioned one more thing. Uh, I mentioned at our social services board meeting last night, there's, uh, I don't know if you guys got the email, there's a meeting tomorrow morning, a listening session. At seven thirty to eight thirty on this, uh, it's called Stop Addiction and Eat. They're looking at developing a private, uh, public partnership plan to, uh, uh, improve access to addiction care and support and things like that. I don't think it's anything big, it's just a meeting, kind of getting some ideas out there, so if anybody wants to, I'm gonna try and make it so.
Where's it?
Uh, it is, let me look here. Tomorrow morning, seven thirty o'clock, Holiday Inn Express. And they were, they, they're working right now, they are, they're actually already have. It's, it's called Face It Together is the program, they have, uh, set up since Sioux Falls, Fargo and Bismarck.
Two seven hours.
So, they're already, already working in Fargo and Bismarck in our state, they actually just got a Bush Foundation grant to try to develop this. Plan for the smaller cities and communities that are quota, so.
You made breakfast.
Yeah, I made breakfast, so, maybe we can go out early and sip coffee.
Do you have anything?
Yeah.
The only thing I have is Candy just handed me over, uh. She had helped Mary Lundy with the museum next door, here, they got two grants, one for sixty-eight hundred dollars and another one for almost forty-six hundred dollars, so. They're moving forward next door, they're, they're keeping up their stuff, and. I know they're trying to blend with our museum.
Barb's still helping them.
This had, this had nothing to do with Barb, really.
Are the, are the grants specific or is it there or?
I don't know, they're just big shakeout grants.
Oh, okay, now just.
Oh, something with.
Yeah, I took a little.
Um, yeah.
I didn't notice all of them.
Something with the south, no, something with the south side.
Three windows. Well, I, one of them's through the windows, no, I, I know that.
And they do mess up if you put it in good shape.
Yep, they do.
Well, I did see that the curtain for that memorial building being.
And I was up and looked at the, uh, at the, uh, state's attorney, I see they got all their walls up. Thank you, Kevin, getting that done? Looks pretty good? Looks good. It'll look a lot better after they taste the texture, but it looks good now.
Is Daisy doing happy?
Yep, she is happy.
She's happy, staff's happy, we're good to go.
Motion to adjourn.
You can adjourn.